Wednesday, April 3rd, 2013, at 7:00 PM. As the appropriate meeting notices have been posted.
The agenda was posted. Daisy's Hardware, Milton Piglubigley, Shaw Municipal Building.
I'd like to welcome everyone here. At this time, we'll address any questions or concerns that are not on the agenda. Seeing nothing, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius. Item number four of the public hearing for Vincent Street Assessments for Water Main Extension. This time, we'll open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, just a few background components, and then I know there are some residents here that want to speak about the project. The historical perspective is that the city in its capital improvement plan, when it was looking at water rate adjustments in the spring of 2012, had a water utility infrastructure improvement scheduled for Vincent and Elm along that particular corridor and necessary to make a loop to increase pressure and to assist with flow. As part of our code of ordinances, we are required to assess the property owners along the area where we are installing a new water main. Fifty percent of the costs associated with that project, we are required to hold a public hearing after notices of assessment were sent out. There are some property owners here, so I would invite those property owners now to speak, if they would like to, about how the project would impact them.
If you want Pat, yeah. Or if anybody wants to.
I ain't got no say. You just gotta listen, I guess.
I'm Al McKnight. I've got many warehouses on that street, and I guess from my perspective, we don't have sewer and water at that property. We don't even have electricity in our building, so for fire protection, it wouldn't be to any advantage that way, but, you know, like, everybody doesn't like increasing taxes or anything, but since I've owned that in the last 10 years, my taxes have doubled, and, you know, with that type of business, you know, the rates have been the same, and so then we had the, that other tax for the water runoff that we've had to take care of, which I understand that, but, so, I mean, this really gets to be more and more of things that we, as, for my own properties, just simply don't need. And so the expenses keep rolling on, and we're stuck with the same rents forever, but, so it gets to be a lot of extra expenses you never, never planned on having, and so I guess that's my thought.
Is it, is it possible, Jerry, that we can work with the, the property owners of spreading out the cost over a period of time? That would, that would help, help them alleviate some of their, their expense?
Yes, I did talk to City Treasurer Connie De Kemper this afternoon, and then also talked with Michelle about some of the practices that we've done in the past, and recognizing that the dollar amounts for some of the businesses and property owners along that area are fairly significant. Staff would encourage the council to entertain the idea of payment plans for those impacted people who are assessed as a result of this project. They could range anywhere from five to as much as 10 years. It just really depends on what you want to do. Recognize that when Ellers worked with us to develop the new rate structure, that following our code of ordinances for doing a special assessment was, was part of their analysis in making the recommendation that they did. So, one of the questions I always ask is, do we have to do this? Do we have to specially assess these people? And the answer I got repeatedly was unequivocally yes. A, because your code of ordinances requires it. B, because the rates that we just recently raised and set were done in anticipation and with a review of those code of ordinances anticipating that we were going to specially assess for these capital projects that we could. So if, if you didn't, if you decided to change the ordinance and then subsequently didn't special assess, you'd be coming back sooner for a potential rate increase, because the revenue would not be meeting the expenses for capital improvements for the utilities. So, as much as it is unpleasant for staff to send these letters out, as much as is unpleasant to necessarily impose these assessments on the property owners, it is a part of the designed revenue stream associated with keeping a healthy infrastructure to provide water. There is fire protection value to creating this loop. That's why it was put into the capital improvement process. There is also a potential industrial value by going from the eight-inch main to the 10-inch main. So, our recommendation is to try to mitigate that impact on the property owners by authorizing, or having you authorize a payment plan for the impacted individuals that would go out up to 10 years. Whether or not you want to do interest or not is a policy decision for you folks to make. In the conversations I had with Connie, I'll tell you that, I mean, obviously, some degree of interest is, is better than none, because we're going to pay for the project right away. And so if you give somebody 10 years to pay with no interest, the city's revenue streams on the utility side are absent that revenue and absent those dollars for that long until they get paid. At the same time, recognizing that interest rates are very, very low to begin with anyway, my thought would be is that it, there may be value to saying zero percent interest for the first five years, and if you stretch it beyond that, that it would go to whatever this current state trust fund loan is, which is normally somewhere between two and three percent. So, those would be some options for you to consider.
I like the idea of giving, of giving them no interest rate for five years, because it is something they couldn't plan for, and it's something that we have to do because it's policy, but if we can keep them from, keep them the least cost that they can have, I think that would be best, and it gives them the option of looking at five years or 10 years for their planning, too. So I would agree with what you had to say, though, with no interest for five years and some interest if they want to go over 10 years.
I guess I agree. Okay. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing. We'll move on to new business. Item A, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2013-02, Vincent Street Assessments.
Can I make that in a form of a motion? Is that what we need?
Do you want to put that into a form of a motion for five years or for 10 years?
Well, I would like to make it a motion that we have no interest for five years, and then, what, two to three percent, or what did we?
The interest rate for a, the state trust fund loan currently on 10-year notes is 2.75 percent. So if you could certainly make a motion that would say no interest for the first five years, and if it paid in full in five years, no interest charges are incurred, and then if the loan on the special assessment is carried out between five and 10 years, 2.5 percent would be imposed annually on the balance.
I think that would be fair, because it'd be less of borrowing costs, so, did you get what Jerry said?
Jerry, 2.5, 2.75? I thought I heard two numbers.
Yeah, 2.75, 2.5 is less than that, so, I mean, it's less than the state trust fund
The motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mark has, Mark had one question.
Can I just clarify that the motion, is the motion specifically to approve the proposed, the resolution imposing the proposed special assessment with these two provisions added into it regarding?
Yes, that's what I, that's what I intended, yep.
Okay.
Second was okay with that?
Right.
That's what everybody voted on?
I think so.
Re-vote.
Okay, with this stated motion and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius.
I will adjust the resolution. Attorney Schrader, we have to bring that back the next council meeting with the adjustment, with the addition of the five years, after five years with 2.5 percent? Can I make?
I understand, the motion is that they're approving this special resolution, approving this special assessment, and as a part of that, they're providing for a, a payment schedule of?
Correct, because I, in the resolution, I have it listed five years, but with the addition after five years?
Five years, no interest, and then any, any, and then payments up to 10 years, but beyond five years, interest at the rate of 2.5 percent, and you do not, so that could just be automatically?
Okay, thank you.
Always based on the resolution.
Discussion and possible action regarding Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas 25 volunteers donated more than 1,400 hours in 2012 assisting, augmenting library staff with the activities and programs, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas the trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Thomas Chesmore, Mayor of City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the City of Milton, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect trees and woodlands, and I further urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Do I have a motion to accept that?
I'll have to accept. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius. Item C, discussion and possible action on accepting the bid for the splash park construction in Goodrich Square.
Thank you, Mayor. This is with some great excitement, enthusiasm, not only on behalf of the Goodrich Square Steering Committee, but on behalf of the many city staff members that have been involved in this project. It was rebid out again this summer, and the adjustments and recommendations that were made by the Goodrich Square Steering Committee in terms of how the length of the bidding process, keeping it, starting it earlier, and extending construction, coupled with some direct purchasing of the various water features and elements, rather than having the contractor do that, saw the bids come in much more competitive and within the recommended budget this time. The lowest of three bids, that SAA, our design firm that we were working with on this particular project, it was from Advanced Construction, at just over $202,000 for the construction of the pad and all of the infrastructure associated with it. The city would be directly purchasing all 10 water features and amenities at an estimated cost of about $115,000, and then with other site development work that we believe will be completed in part in conjunction with city staff, and then some additional supplies and materials, landscaping, and things like that, a total estimated project budget of right around $344,000, or $6,000 less than we had originally budgeted for the project. So, staff recommendation is that the city council authorize acceptance of the bid and construction of the splash pad in Goodrich Square.
Question?
To accept the bid. Advance and start.
A second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carius. That should be done when?
Late July, early August. So, should be a very, very exciting project. If we have anything like we had last summer, I think it will get a lot of good use.
I don't know where I have to sit at my lawn chair.
Do we get, do the council get to be the first ones to try it out?
Sure.
You, Don.
You're going to parade around in your swimsuit.
I believe it was our engineer that told me yesterday, no speedos from city staff. Okay, fair enough.
Staff, not council.
Right, not council. Right.
Okay, item D, discussion and possible action authorizing the administrator to work with the city attorney on drafting a mobile business license ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up from something that we started last year, and staff did a considerable amount of research on the issue, and there are so many variables and information related to what different communities do as to how they put together a license for a mobile business. Our code is silent on the issue, as we found out last year when we had some of the issues that came up with what commonly became referred to as the taco truck. We wanted to kind of get something addressed, knowing that with the splash park and with all of the other different things that we have going on from the, on the project side, want to try to balance creating a very welcoming environment for businesses, yet at the same time, making sure that there's adequate parking and public safety issues are addressed. So, I put together in a memo kind of some general parameters of using guidelines for how we could establish a mobile business license. Those things included looking at not only zoning requirements, but also taking a look at doing things like making sure that their anticipated duration and their hours of operation were generally consistent with either business or residential objectives in that particular zoned area of our community. So, I do recommend one amendment, after talking to Mark, that, that this be within the licensing and permitting part of our ordinances, that the, that a fee be established of about $100 for someone to do this, and that would be the maximum on an annual basis. It's more than a direct seller's permit, but at the same time, you know, less than a conditional use permit, less than a variance application, and that there be an opportunity for some public input into that process related to the licensing of a mobile business in our community. Those are just staff thoughts from having researched other communities. And what, you know, what we, what we got from, from Whitewater was substantially different than what we got from Madison, and obviously, the communities and their sizes are very differently. I think most importantly, you folks have to be comfortable with, what do you want from Milton? You know, I could show you a list of what all these other cities want, and how they do it, and all that stuff, but it, it varied so wildly from, some don't allow them at all, to some allow them year-round, to some have put restrictions on the size of the trailer that they can have, to some allow it for nonprofits but not for profits, and it just really was, was all over the board. So, I started with a framework, because I know this was an issue that we had talked about for a long time, and, and wanted to see if that framework, if you wanted things added to it or deleted from it, or kind of where you wanted to go with it.
It's somewhat unique that the taco truck adjusted schedule for the UW Whitewater schedule, so, you know, you have more variables, and it's not just seasonal, or that is super seasonal, whichever. I, I, I don't see a clear and easy answer for any of it, so go for it, see what you find.
I don't have, I, I would anticipate we could see more of these kinds of things, which is why I wanted to get some policy parameters in place from you folks, given the fact that a splash pad is going to be constructed, given the fact that Blackhawk Technical College is, is becoming a more likely event in our community. I could see more of them, and that's why I kind of want to have the framework established for what, what you want to see and what you don't want to see.
My concern is, I got this article out of a health magazine, and it, it is about the food and is it safe in these trucks? And like the one we had this last summer, the refrigeration or the health as far as the?
Is it inspected?
What?
You know, was there any inspection was the question?
Would there be, you know, who's, who's checking that? You know, they come in once maybe, and okay, it's fine, well, then a week later, anything could happen, and that's what's concerning me, and especially if these young kids are going to be running up there and getting things, you know?
Yeah.
Well, how often? Go ahead. We have to keep it safe, you know?
Are they, do you know if they're inspected any more or less than, you know, restaurants?
Just one of the like?
I don't.
Okay, yeah, who, under whose domain of inspection is it?
I know the taco truck was Department of Health. I mean, so they had a Rock County Department of Health license.
Rock County.
So I, I don't know how.
But Whitewater's in Rock County, and they're out of, and so I'm confused when you say that.
Correct, my, my apologies. The State Department of Health issues the license. I don't know if someone from the Rock County office then inspects, or I don't know the procedures exactly of how it works, other than that when they submitted their direct seller's permit, they had a State Department of Health food seller's permit. How frequently they get inspected, I don't know.
That's what bothers me, because I know that the state doesn't inspect like they used to, or some of the other places that they're supposed to be.
The county does the local restaurants. Yeah, Rock County does the local restaurants, so.
But if the truck is out of a different county, I get muddy in my thinking.
You could require them to have Rock County permit as, as part of a ordinance or something, so.
This proposed ordinance, I noticed it has some language there, or it's not ordinance, but the proposal has some language about having permission from private property owners. Is that meant to preclude them from parking in a parking stall?
What it would be is, let's say, for example, one wanted to set up in the parking lot of QuickTrip, that they would have to get approval of QuickTrip to be there to set up and do that, because it goes beyond general parking for their business use. Some, some businesses post, you know, for this business parking only, some do not, and so legally speaking, some people will go and just kind of use that as a public parking lot, even though it's technically not. That's why I would encourage that language to be in there, so if somebody says, well, I want to set up my lemonade stand here and sell lemonade, and then the, the property owner says, well, I don't want you doing that here.
Right.
And, and for liability purposes and other things like that as well.
What, $100 a year is a pretty good, you know, price if you're doing a good business out of a food truck next to a splash pad, and our parking will be at a premium there. When you were researching this, did you come across anyone who also had parking, you know, fees, you know, where you could pay additional to be, you know, in a, you know, maybe a designated selling spot?
I didn't, although in Madison's, I know that they're, they're, they charge a higher fee because it's annual, you know, sort of a thing, so I can look back and review theirs more. Theirs was incredibly thick. I think it was Mark that actually connected me to the person for Madison's, but they had the size of the trailer that it could be on the square, and then the hours of operation and everything, and I, I looked through all that, and I thought, well, I don't know if you want to get that prescriptive or not, but I mean, it was, it was very heavily regulated, because they have a lot of them.
And so the parking lot that, by the school is owned by the city, and so how does the city view this?
Right, and that, that would be my question for you, is, do you want to just naturally allow it, or do you want to charge someone to, essentially, as Brett's suggesting, rent space for the city?
Well, you know, I have this, this vision of three of them parked in a row and no place for anybody to park. I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Right, the, what I would propose is the process, a part of getting a mobile business license, although governed by licensing ordinance, would go through the Planning Commission, so they'd be subject through the same kind of regulations, if you will, of, of having to submit a site plan, or something like a site plan, that would say, this is what we're going to do, this is how it's going to work, these are the parking parameters, and then that would fall back on the zoning requirements as to where they intend to do it. So it, it makes sense that way then in terms of, because the zoning code is established with also public safety in mind, because if a certain business is going to go in a certain location, they have to have so many stalls, it has to get out in terms of traffic flow and all those other kinds of things. So there, there'd be some government intervention, some government oversight into, you couldn't just kind of plop up stakes anywhere and try to make it work.
There should be some rent charged, because permanent business have to pay tax in their, in their structure where they are.
Correct.
It doesn't have to be a large amount, but it should be something for that, for that spot, because the businesses who are paying rent and paying taxes on their property.
They're paying water and sewer treat, you know, and the truck isn't paying water and sewer, so, but my other concern would be, can you have a variety of licenses, like you have one taco, one ice cream, one pizza, you know, just so that there is, you don't have three taco trucks in a row?
Sure.
I'm concerned that, you know?
Yeah, I think you could. In my conversations I've had with Mark, what we want to try to balance is, is not only what do you want to see, but then also making sure that there's criteria and for, if you want to allow them at all, and that, and that, and that's the, that's a question for you, too, if you want to allow them at all, that the criterion for denial has to be that you're not discriminating, and that, that, to that be the case. So, simply because if somebody wanted to sell ice cream at Childberg Park, and because there's an ice cream stand across the way.
That pays its water and sewer.
Right, you, I don't, I don't know that if you have an ordinance that allows them to do that, that simply saying, well, we already have an ice cream stand, that's why we're denying it, would be, would be the reason you could do it. If, if that's the direction you want to go, then you'd probably be better off saying no mobile businesses, because then you don't ever have to worry about a mobile business competing with a permanent business.
I don't think it's fair for the business owners who we have over there, they pay taxes, they pay, they have to have all the licenses and everything, and then we allow these trucks to come in, and, and we don't know for sure that they're being kept clean or not, and how, and what their health records are, or?
Well, do you want to have nonprofits, like the 4H Cooking, your hot dogs? I mean, how do you, where do you want to cut it off? You know, if you want to have food and vending?
Well, you're not going to get, you're not going to get 4H or, or any of those clubs every day of the week wanting to sell.
I think you're setting a very dangerous precedent by, by doing the protectionism thing. I'm all for supporting the Milton businesses, but we had this discussion last year, and if that truck is serving something that our local businesses do not, which in that case last year they were, we shouldn't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have, I have no problem with the business, but I do think if they're going to take up public parking space, they pay something for that parking, because...
I, I agree, they're going to be paying the fee anyway, and they should, if they want to, they want a spot, they should pay for it and designate a few spots, and charge them, charge them $100. You know, the, a price of a, price of a license being $100, the price of a parking place being $200, they're going to make that out of there in one day, if they're any good.
And how are you going to limit how many can come and do that?
Are you going to have like three slots, or what, you know, that would be?
Totally up to you guys. At this point in time, I don't really care.
If we did charge for parking spot on city property, what liabilities is that put on us, anything?
We'd want to check with our liability insurance carrier, because we, my suspicion is we'd want to negotiate some sort of a whole harmless agreement that the things that are here on the city property, that you're running with your business, you know, that sort of thing, but I could check with CivMec.
And would it make a difference if we weren't renting the spot, but instead having, instead of a $200 rental on top of a $100 fee, just a $300 fee, and three, you know, a limited number of designated stalls?
We could, we could set the structure up in that regard, too.
That would, that would, you know, make it equitable, right? Because then if, you know, a fourth business came in, you know, given the example of three stalls, there just isn't any more room, and then you don't have to make a valid judgment.
And you're going to have a company going, we'd like you to increase it, your ordinance, change your ordinance to make it four stall.
Probably.
Or why are you discriminating against my truck?
And I think you're going to want to do the discrimination thing, you know? You said that taco truck wasn't selling anything the local business was selling, but let's say they were, and because they were, you tell them you can't get into it.
Right.
If you're protecting your own business and not everybody else, so.
And that's, and that's not, you know, that's not a bad thing, protecting our current businesses, because like everybody has stated, you know, they pay taxes, they pay water rates and everything else, but how far do you want to take it?
My, my point was that how do we justify the refusal of a permit on that basis?
I don't think you could.
I don't think you can.
Right.
And if you're just going to limit, we could limit the parking, though.
Yes.
Could limit the parking, but I mean, trying to, it gets, it gets really touchy when you start generalizing food, you know, that they vend. Linda?
Just leave a wide open window there, you could have somebody pull into the parking lot across the street from Family Restaurant and start selling hamburgers and stuff.
Right.
Are you going to refuse it because of that?
I, I would think that, that you'd have a very difficult time defending that position.
Linda Clark, I have a couple of things that I think should be taken into consideration. First of all, the taco truck, if I remember right, that was down on Parkview Drive, and it was parked in the parking lot that was between Parkview Drive and the school, Goodrich Park, right? Okay, so if we are planning on getting extra traffic in this area, do we want to tie up our parking places? That's my first concern. My second concern is that we as a city have done a lot of work in helping our businesses out with the facade improvements. So, Goodrich Square is definitely a historic area. How do we keep these businesses from coming in and making the area look trashy when we've done all this work to make it appealing to people? That's my other concern. So, I think that, I don't think that we should... So I think that, I don't think that we should be giving up our parking spaces. I think we want to keep that for the people that are using the businesses and the splash park. And then my other concern is, okay, what if there's a game going on? Because we in parks encourage our nonprofit groups to sell things so that they can support themselves. Sometimes we do it to support ourselves. So something like this is. So I would just like for you to consider those things.
Basically, what you'd like them to do is just deny the whole thing.
Pretty much.
Cut right to the chase, don't beat around the bush.
What if one of our local businesses wanted to have a mobile truck to expand their, you know, what they offer?
I still go by what I say. I have no problem with having that as long as we license them. And then we charge them for using some of the public parking places because then they're paying some, something for that spot. Like businesses are paying for the spot that they have in their streets. Well, that goes with it, yeah.
Well, couldn't we just, can we limit the number of permits we issue?
You establish the code, you could say there's only going to be one, there's only going to be two, there's only going to be four. You could do that.
You know, there's several, go to auctions and provide lunch at auction setup trucks that are around. They could, I envision that they could set up as if they wish to.
And one of the things.
The vice?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I would suggest so that the issue is more clearly narrowed to, by definition is, I certainly wouldn't expect like, you know, John Conger cooking brats in the parking lot of the high school to get a mobile business license. Nonprofit groups would be exempt, auction sites would be exempt. The groups that are permanently, you know, setting up shop and making profit, making a business. So, because those other groups are not regulated by Department of Health or anything like that. They don't have to go through that same licensing and permitting. But the groups that are an actual business, you know, you're coming to the city every day and you're going to make money here. That they would go through this. And so that's what I'm more so talking about in this license, so that there's not confusion or. I don't think we want to get into the business of regulating every time a high school group, the FFA or any other group, you know, cooks a few hamburgers and sells them. I don't consider that to be a business. If you're coming here mobile and you're making money, that's a business.
So what are you looking for tonight? You just want permission to work on this?
Yeah, to work with the attorney and then I'm also trying to get a sense of what direction you'd like to go with it. So that I can narrow down with Mark our conversations. A little bit of what I'm hearing is make sure that we check on the liability of parking. Check on the ability to limit the number of licenses issued.
Require them to go through the Rock County Health Department?
Okay, and is that for initial inspection or ongoing inspection?
I'd like to make a motion that we not allow it, any of them.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Question in terms of the issue being raised about limiting the number of licenses. Are you concerned from a citywide standpoint or only from a standpoint of use of city-owned facilities such as parking lots?
That's why I think, you know, if we're going to allow it, we should have designated areas in which it happens, not just any haphazard way.
Permanent fairgrounds?
No, but I mean, but I, you know, I think there's certain places that might be feasible and other places that might not be. That they just can't drive in any place they want.
Is that how it is now? They can kind of drive wherever they want or?
Do you want to have only nonprofits? I mean, that would be a question that.
I guess my concern is there's, it's similar to Linda's, there ends up being like six trucks in that parking lot by, you know, the.
Which eliminates the parking, but yeah.
I mean, it's a very interesting policy debate because as I'm walking through the various events that we have that might apply and fit into this, the circus coming to town is a business. You know, you have the Fourth of July celebration crowd. And if there are other events that the tourism committee works on that says, hey, we want to invite maybe a carnival or a band or something like that, you know.
Those aren't permanent.
Right, those aren't permanent.
Those aren't permanent.
And they were special.
They're special events. And I don't, like I said, the reason I say that is because we're going to sell concessions at the splash park, right? You know, do we want three trucks right next to there taking, you know, that's why I said, we have to designate if they're going to have business. Because we are using that to help fund the splash park.
May I ask a question? Not to add any more confusion to this, but in regard to an ice cream truck that doesn't sit, would this be a same license that they would have to get?
Direct sellers.
Okay, and then also, I'm not sure if they still exist, but there used to be a popcorn wagon is what they called it that parked at the parks during recreation games. I don't know if there's any in existence anymore with some of the clubs that do nonprofits. But that's mobile, it's a trailer. Would that require a permit also?
That's always, that's, then they have to have a permit for, well, it depends what they have, but.
They haven't.
But that's only set up, I mean, for years when I was running recreation program, Jennings has always had that truck. But that was only set up during the time of the games, not during any other hours.
And that's what I guess I'm asking, is that something we want to consider or not?
Yeah, because it's things like the auction trucks that come out and provide a service for a day.
And that provides a service only for five weeks while this is going on, which is helpful to the people that are there. So I mean, that I don't see as a business competing.
But that is a business, so you're walking a two-sided line.
Yeah, Mark and I just talked through it. Technically, it would fall under the provisions of this because it's a for-profit. More, yeah, more permanent, so it would be, it would be in it now.
And him's popcorn is still trying to make a profit.
And we could probably add some tiers to it or layers that would have it that.
A lot complicated.
You know, it would make it a little bit more descriptive in the ordinance. But that, you know, ones that would require a parking stall have to pay this amount. It's the hundred dollar license fee plus the, whatever the rent fee is. Ones that don't require that, a smaller version, a hot dog wagon, a brat fry guy, whatever it is, that don't require the parking piece, their permit requirement, their fee is less because it doesn't require that.
But the gathering place brought its own travel trailer and just did it.
Right.
Yeah, now, if you forbid all of this, does that fall under no to have the gathering place come down with its trailer for one day?
I would say no. I would hope not. I mean, those are important community things.
Well, I think, I think what I'm hearing is it sounds like there's probably a reason Madison has such a long ordinance.
Oh, that's great state of Dane.
There's probably a lot of variables, but I, I don't know, there's so many variables. I guess it's probably something we should make a motion to give you general direction, to come up with some kind of a draft ordinance and then.
What general direction do you want?
Well, I mean, I guess I would lean towards more specific than not if we're going to do anything. Otherwise, you know, that's all we've talked about, right, is variables. So, you know, obviously it's important. Otherwise, if we feel comfortable with just a hundred dollars a year and designating a couple of stalls and a couple of parts of town, well, that's easy, but that doesn't meet anybody's concerns that have been stated.
I guess I'm kind of conflicted on this issue. But I would certainly like to see you research it, come up with all the variables that we could be dealing with.
Okay.
At this point, I'd kind of like to try a year's worth of whatever our best guess is and see what shakes out.
Well, before we do that, then we need to see all the variables, the options are out there for us.
This is going to be a constant, constant change ordinance, I see. It's going to change every year as conditions change and everything else changes.
Maybe we'll just have to renew it every year then.
We will, what I did hear though is that I will check on the liability issue. I will check on the legal capability of us to limit the number of licenses issued. I will check on the Rock County Health Department, their capacity to inspect, whether that be annual or ongoing. And I will also look at, please help me, there was a lot of discussion. There was, I'm trying to get the last, the last piece of.
Insurance.
Yeah, thank you. We may be able to require that they have their own insurance. So that it wouldn't be on ours, that they show proof that they're bonded or whatever the case may be, so.
But you take, like when we have the barbecue, a person can't find a place to park to begin with. And then if you come over there and you find three food trucks besides the chicken barbecue and you're trying to find a parking place, you know.
But how did you arrive at, I don't mean to prolong this, but how did you arrive at the annual fee versus like a daily fee? And making certain fees available on certain.
Administrative fees.
Right.
The nutcrack in it because thinking to myself, how would staff have that capacity in terms of enforceability to say, how many days was the taco truck there?
Because Maxine makes a good point. When the chicken barbecue is going on, you know, that day is probably one that, you know, some people might want excluded.
Well, yeah, can we exclude?
Same with the Fourth of July.
Be able to do that.
Well, you could, you could, certainly.
And if you've got a bunch of kids in that park and you've got traffic coming or you've got a ballgame and you've got those spaces, people are going to get angry, why is that food truck there? We can't find a place to park.
Well, what happened last year?
Of no, they're getting a little better.
By the, but, you know, if you got them on, they're going to be on both sides of the.
He was always there on weekends, too, wasn't he?
He may never come back.
From a noise perspective, if they're running generators and you get more than one in your parking lot, forget it.
Yeah.
That thing was loud as heck last year.
It was loud.
Yeah.
So you get two of them surrounding.
It's because he couldn't afford a Honda.
They needed better generator, probably.
Or they needed better everything, right.
Your version of no is looking.
Okay, we have, you have some general direction, Jerry?
Yes.
I think if we prolong this long enough, we can talk about this for the next six months. And I don't have that much time. Okay, General Lives, next meeting is Tuesday, April 16th.
Wait, are we there yet?
I thought we were.
No, we got one more.
Well, I thought this, didn't draft an annual fee schedule?
No, that, we were just at the mobile license.
Oh, what do you mean, a motion?
No, no, we're in.
Is there an E? You already talked about E.
E?
Yep.
I thought that was part of D.
Nope, this is, it's similar, but a little bit different. So I'll be, I'll be fast.
On your toes, Mayor.
Fast talking on it. In this particular situation, we found through, going through our code of ordinances when we were researching this issue, some of our ordinances have fees directly established in them. Other ordinances are established by, established fees by resolution. We'd like to bring consistency to that and so that every year at budget time, staff would be able to show council members, these are what all of the fees are for the various things that we ask people to do. The other thing is from a staff perspective and efficiency, sometimes people come in and they ask how much something is. And if it's something we do a lot, staff can rattle it off right away, like we know conditional use permit, variances, direct sellers permits, alcohol operators license, some of the things that we do less frequently. We often have to go and look in the ordinance book. We'd rather make it be a little bit easier, not only for staff, but for citizens, more importantly, to say, if you want to do something in the city and you want to know how much it costs, it's right on our annual fee schedule. The other thing that this does is it causes both staff and the council and the mayor to look at this issue annually. So they can see, because some of our fees that have been established haven't been updated in a long, long time. And we want to try to make sure that we're cost recovering as much of the fees that we can by the user who's requesting the service so that it's not subsidized by the general tax levy.
And then you would post it on the website?
Correct. So if you wanted to know how much an operator's license permit or fee, operator's license application cost, it would be right there. And so it would be almost like kind of a chapter and verse table of contents thing, if you will, and have it all right there. If you're a developer and you, hey, how much are the fees in Milton? You know, building permits are this much. If you want to build a deck, you want to know how much it is, it's all right there. And the other good thing about this is that sometimes, as we found, like when we were doing the advertising ordinance for athletic field, we learned after the fact that the dollar amount was a little bit more than some of the businesses were able to do. Well, to change that, we have to change the ordinance and changing the ordinance is expensive in terms of publications, in terms of public hearing notices and all those other things. The fee schedule, you adapt annually through resolution, so it's a much less expensive process. I would argue it's even more transparent than the code of ordinance process because you would put that in in your budget deliberations and in your budget public hearing. So people could come if they didn't like the fees that you're proposing and weigh in on it. Please, just to draft it, yeah.
Motion in a second. Paul is in favor?
I'm.
Paul is? Gary's? Okay, Moonah?
Yes, Linda has a question.
I was just wondering if you could add park fees to that.
It would be all fees, yep. Park rentals, everything, yep. Okay.
You have to kill a tree.
Well, don't have to kill a website.
Got space.
Okay, the next meeting is Tuesday, April 16th. Here in all the persons report us. First off, I would like to thank all the people that managed to survive the election. Congratulations to everyone. Like to thank the people that voted, whether you voted for me or not, I think it's great that we had to turn off the head. This is my last meeting. So basically, those of you who know me know that I don't mess around too much. I pretty much say what's on my mind, so this is it. I'd like to thank the city staff. We have the best city staff, better thing I've ever seen. You make the council look good, you make me look good. And we've accomplished a lot in the last four years in the aggressive schedule that we've had. I can still remember the look on people's faces and the reactions to people when I said we were going to build a building. It's done. Heck, we're not actually building another building, but we're adding on to one and we're moving. Our staff and police department, library is expanding, done, done, done. Splash Park, done. YMCA, here, done. That was a very important project. We met with Parker over that one. Black Hawk Tech, just about, almost, this close. There's a few things that have been, that bothered me the last few weeks. And that was now that I don't have the two-minute time limit. Let me just say that there was a couple of things that came up in the election that upset me. A lot of misinformation put out there. And being unable to respond because of the constraints of the newspaper's time or the time at the forum. I just want to address a couple of issues. First off, nothing has ever come before this council without a proposal on how to pay for it. There was a statement made by Brett. And this may sound like sour grapes, but this is something I got to get rid of off my chest. Nothing has ever come before this council without a proposal on how to pay for it. It's an insult to the city staff and this council that that information was ever put out there because it's not true. And that just ticks me right off. You know how defensive I am of the council and of the city staff? And that kind of misinformation just totally, and it hangs out there and there's no response to it because there can't be. Perfect timing. Nothing has ever come before this council without a proposal on how to pay for it. And I take exception to the fact that it was ever put out there. My friends at the Gazette, I wouldn't give you thirty minutes more of my life if it was the last thirty minutes I ever had. That's the second time I've been down to sit with them eight weirdos. I'd never go back. Fortunately, my time in politics is over. I can't play politics like was played this last time. I can't do it. It's not in me. I'm not a politician. I'm not good at it. I'm very, very outspoken, I'm very aggressive and I tell the truth. And there was a lot of, a lot of things put out there that weren't fact. And it's a shame that it's come down to it. But even if I wanted to, I can't play this game anymore. We've accomplished quite a bit and this council should be very, very proud of itself. You've made a lot of tough decisions. A lot of the tough decisions have been made already. As I said at the candidates forum, who wouldn't want to be mayor? A lot of heavy lifting's been done, not to say that there's not going to be more coming, because there are always. A lot, a lot of heavy lifting's been done, not to say that there's not going to be more coming, uh, cause there always is. Brett's already getting a taste of what it's like, uh, how much time this is going to suck up out of your life. I can tell you right now, one of these days you'll look and your kids will be graduating high school and you're going to wonder where the hell the time went. It's hard. You can trust somebody who's been down that road. It, it takes a lot of time and this, the mayor's position, if you're extremely hands-on, will take up probably a good four or five hours of your day, every single day. Every single day. It's old, as Nate Bruce said, it's a lot of work. And you'll figure that out pretty quick. By the way, you got a week and a half to get your committees in line.
We've already reminded him of that one.
Did you? Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You know me.
The clerk will hound you until you.
Politely.
Well, if you cry and curl up in a corner, she sometimes will leave you alone. Um, I mean, it's been an honor. It really has. A lot of us have had our differences. We've had conflicts, we've always resolved them. Always remember that the conflicts that take place in this council chambers are discussed in this council chambers. They should never be taken to the press. What goes on in here doesn't stay in here, but everybody will go walk out in the parking lot without calling out the dogs. And always remember, there's seven of us. There's seven of you. It's not just one person. There's seven people that make the decisions that work this city and it's a lot of work. It's a lot of time commitment on everybody's part. And I don't think people appreciate it until they've actually played the part. I think everybody in their life should have to do it at least once. Because you join a whole new perspective of how much money it takes to run this city and the commitment it takes from the people to run the city. We've got a lot of good things in place, there's a lot of good things coming. I look forward to sitting at the splash park in my lawn chair and my Speedo underneath the flower.
Get the camera crew.
If I see Don, I'll get him with the water cannon. Really, it's been, it's been a fun ride. I was kind of hoping for two more years, but, uh, I think everything we have in place is pretty much set in stone. It's going to happen. You know, like I said, we've done a lot. I started this community service thing in 1980. Took a little two years off between, somewhere between the fire department and the city council. Well, actually the ambulance and the fire department. They have a couple of children and I go back at it, so. I got 31 years of, of serving the Milton community. And it's been a lot of fun. I've made a lot of friends. I've also made a lot of enemies. Hopefully you never see the seedy side of it where they throw nails in your driveway, run over your mailbox, you know, it's, it's the nice things like that to let you know that you're making all the right choices. Cause there's always going to be a few that don't like the choices that you make. But fortunately you are on, well, unfortunately, I, we made it through all that. But I'd like to thank Milton. It's been a lot of fun. I'll still be here. Please don't raise my taxes any more than you have to. At least I don't have to go home and yelled at by my wife every time we raised the water rates or the, or the taxes, so I mean, it's, I, now I can just go, it's staff? So I want everybody to know it's, uh, it's been an honor. And I'd like to say we'll do it again sometime, but I'm done. 30 years, 31 years, that's enough.
I'm going fishing.
I am going fishing. I'm bringing my boat home tomorrow. And as my grandson put it last night when he called me, it's no big deal Papa, it gives us more time to fish. So that makes it, that makes it okay. So I want you guys to enjoy. I'll be thinking about you when it's like 80 degrees outside, sun, perfect day for fishing. I'll be thinking about you, sitting down here, trying to work out a budget. That's all I have. All the persons reports.
Well, I want to thank you, Tom, for the 31 years because I know what it's like being a teacher and having a coach and the time commitment, so. On behalf of me being here, a citizen of Milton for as long as you've been doing things, I appreciate all the time you gave, so I'm going to let you know that.
I agree, Tom.
You guys need to thank your voters, come on, all you people. Let's get your hands in the air.
Tom, we didn't always agree on things, but you know, chickens, who thought?
Well, chickens will never come up again. Brett wanted to know why the hell we're even talking about them.
So I do appreciate.
That's my platform.
And my response is that when, when a citizen has a question, it doesn't matter whether you want it or not. Oh, one other thing I wanted to explain, just quickly. It was always a question of the mayor setting the agenda. It was one thing that I never let come to the agenda of this council, one. And that was the county M. Interchange. It was something that was brought up for, with Kim Hickson was here. It was nothing but a political stunt on his part, I think. Um, I had a discussion with Senator Cullen shortly after he was elected and we talked about it. I did research it. The reason I didn't let it come to the council is because I didn't want the council wasting its time on something that couldn't possibly be done. It would cost the city tens of millions of dollars to run infrastructure out to where they want us to run it. County M is not a Class A highway. You'd have to route the traffic and unless the DOTs won't put in a brand-new highway, it isn't, it couldn't be done. My last reason is, I do not want, no, I did not want trucks carrying Toma products or any other traffic for that matter going through a residential neighborhood or past a grade school. Toma is very good, well, their products is very good about their safety record, but there has been incidences. And I'd hate to see one happen in front of a grade school where we end up with children hurt. And plus, when, everybody knows what it's like at West Side Grade School when it lets out. To throw more traffic into that mix is, uh, I don't know, maybe you could build a viaduct or something to go over it, but that was my reasoning for never bringing that onto an agenda for discussion. Because first of all, the city can't afford it. Second of all, I don't think the residents or the schools or the children could afford to have the risk. And that was my reason for not ever bringing that onto an agenda. I know Brett and Don both asked for it to be put out and I told you I wouldn't do it. Cause I'd already, I'd already researched it back when, when Kim brought it up here. We did some really in-depth research and it's astronomically expensive to run infrastructure out there. And for the last developer we talked to, talked to us about a gas station and maybe a McDonald's. Not too sure, but I don't think a gas station and McDonald's would generate enough payback to, to spend a hundred million dollars running infrastructure out that far. So there's my reasoning. I want to let everybody know that. That's the only thing I never let come to the agenda. Sometimes you gotta use your better judgment and since we'd already researched that, that was the reason it never came. Although I would like to see, if you're going to push for something, push for something, access for emergency vehicles onto the interstate.
Brian Myers is already working on that, isn't he? I'd see that little tongue in cheek.
Lauren Lippincott was working on that 30 years ago.
Oh, gosh.
So, I mean, you couldn't get anywhere with it. They had the DOT and everything, but now that they're going to do that, now would be a prime time to maybe think about that. So I'm done. I'm actually done forever.
Always write letters to the editor.
Oh, I, oh, don't, don't think I'm going to just sit back and, and, and sit back in my lawn chair in my front yard in my Speedo underneath the daisy and wave at Don. I'll be watching. And you guys know me, um, I'll do the best I can to stay away from the podium. But the reason I, whatever brought me to this council chambers to start with was the fact that they put in the trash fees. But I got, I can, I can absolutely guarantee you I have no intention of going into any more politics. I'm, I'm done. It's just, it's not the same as it used to be.
There may be openings on some committees, just in case.
No. I'm going to, I, I need to, I need to just take some time. I need some time with myself. I've been at this a long time. When I have been doing this, I've been answering pager calls. So I'm, I'm due. I need a little rest. I'm not going to retire, I'm just going to rest. Anybody else want to thank their voters?
I think you've done a great job because the Tom that I remember is when I moved here and you were courting Jane. And I remember that you were a lot.
Jesus, God.
Was courting?
Yes. It was a long time ago.
I'm having flashbacks. It's not a pretty sight either.
I can go a lot. I can go back a lot further than that. If I'm not good, then that's going to say how old I am.
When I was, how old was I when I used to swim in your pool?
Probably about four.
The Ding Dong Lady was a, a welcome to Milton vision. Going down the street in her pink bathrobe, walking the poodle at seven in the morning. And her CB voice would come over our clock radio. So you'd have Marsha talking to us on our clock radio alarm. Yes, that one.
I've been listening to that for 30 years, maybe a long. I understand. Okay, anybody else want to, Brett, you want to thank your voters?
Tonight I'll do it next time.
Okay, alright. See, the reason I can do this is because this is my last time on the soapbox, so.
And we didn't have to get the gavel out.
And you didn't, she's, she's starting to beat me with the gavel. My own gavel. Oh, cheers, Melon. Anybody else? What do we got here? Staff reports, city administrator.
I had prepared a few words, Tom, but, um, I don't, I don't really know that I have them. The, the position of city administrator works very, very close with the mayor because of all of the different issues that come up. And that, whether it be internal staff issues, things in the external environment. And whether it be five o'clock in the morning emails or 11 o'clock at night phone calls about negotiating the purchase of a property and you, you name it. I know I underestimated the, the work in this position. I certainly underestimated the work in the position of mayor when I was police chief and, and only had a greater sense of appreciation and understanding, so all I can say, Tom, is thank you. When we at the staff level succeeded, you stepped aside. And when we failed, you stepped in and were supportive and helped us. And you reorganized three out of five city departments. And as I continue to live here and raise my family here and I look at all of the accomplishments and all of the things that you've been a part of and, and the vision that you had at a time when I remember sitting in this room and you saying that we're going to build a building and I began rubbing my bald head and saying, how are we going to do that? That Milton is a better place because of what you and your family and the sacrifices that you've made to be here. I have learned a lot from you about leadership. I appreciate your patience and your understanding when things got tough. I appreciate your constant support of the city staff. I appreciate your willingness to work so hard with a very, very active council who, as you noted, was willing to make tough decisions. In my last job, we would have a saying when someone would leave or, or retire, it's perhaps among the greatest compliments you could give them. And that is, I would walk through any door with you. And, um, and I, I thank you for what you've done on behalf of the city. I thank you for your leadership and more importantly, I thank you for the friendship that we've developed over the years and doing what we've been able to get accomplished, so.
Good job fishing and Brett laid off work.
Thank you. All I have.
Public Works. That's how we should know we're going.
Thanks for the building, Tom.
How the hell do I follow that? That's because it hasn't snowed lately.
Yeah.
We didn't get the Easter blizzard. You're welcome. Police Department.
As you all know, we had that barricade subject, the event in the recent past on Rogers Street and a lot of good cooperation amongst law enforcement. I was shocked how fast everybody showed up from other jurisdictions to help us out, which was a big kudo to them. DPW and other city staff were great, especially the guys on the barricades. Yeah.
Nice work.
One thing we did learn from this, everybody there performed admirably, communications were great. We definitely need to get ourselves a less lethal shotgun. And so what I've done is I've ordered parts to convert one into a less lethal shotgun and order ammunition, so we'll need to get training on it. And we'll need to get, uh, policy amended on it, but it actually is, uh, used by a lot of departments. And you use it for situations like that. Instead of using deadly force, you shoot them with a shotgun. The Taser distance wouldn't be close enough to do it with a Taser, so you need that other option out there, so. We're going to go to that. It's, uh, it has limited uses, but boy, when you need it, it works great. Like the Sheriff's Department used their 40 millimeter rubber bullets, which are a lot bigger. They ended the situation by shooting the guy twice with it. So that's what we want to get to the point where we at least have that option in our tool bag available to us. Just wanted to let you know that something will be getting fairly soon.
Do the rubber bullet, if I asked a rubber bullet to me?
A 40 millimeter rubber bullet, sounds.
Forty millimeters, they're like this round.
Like you hit with a tennis ball.
It hurts a lot at close range.
If, if you could have heard the explanation I got from Dan that day when he called me just as I was pulling in my driveway. It was, I was, because I know Dan and I, I was listening to him explain the situation to me. And we got to the point where we shot him with 40 caliber rubber bullets and they hurt.
I was wondering if it could be a 4th of July event or something, you know.
Oh, my God.
I always thought if the police department ever had a fundraiser, I would be.
Night out, family night out.
And I'm hoping Brett will follow in my footsteps.
He won't.
Dunk tank, dunk tank.
Yeah, how about the dunk tank, freezing cold water?
Yeah.
If your feet turn a little.
Fight out.
Chief, what you're saying, do we have that option to use those big size?
Right, it costs a lot more money to go 40 millimeter because you need a separate launcher for it. We can spend seventy dollars and convert one of our shotguns, put orange forehand on it, four orange shot, uh, grips on it. And it says right on it, less lethal. When you buy ammunition and whenever it's taken out, it's always unloaded and someone loads in the less lethal ammunition in there, so nobody makes a mistake. Because mistakes have been made and people have been killed thinking they're shooting less lethal, so. There's a lot of safeguards that have to go in place before you can use it and a lot of training and definitely have to put policy in place. We need it.
Let's see the library here, going fire now here, city clerk.
I want to thank the 943 voters that voted last night. I was really aiming for a thousand, but we didn't quite get there. But it was a good turnout. We had 28 percent. Um, the state and the county predicted maybe 20, so we surpassed them. And, uh, Mayor, thank you for the few months I've sat next to you. This has been fun.
Well, you got to trade another one.
I know, I know.
It's terrible. It never, never ends. Hopefully his memory is a little better than mine.
He's got this right here.
I'm just telling you. Okay, city trainer.
We, um, the PSC report, which is the annual report for the Water Department, has been filed with the, um, PSC. The draft of the financial statements, it has been sent to me, so we're just working on the MDMA. We should have a final audit um, by the end of the month. Um, so that's going really well. And then, um, I just want to say thank you, Mayor. I, I don't like being in the front of the group talking very much. But, um, my first two years here were, um, not exactly smooth. And I can't, I can't say how much I thank you for giving me this opportunity because it meant a lot to me, so.
You were, you were an excellent addition to our already excellent staff. You've done wonders. And, you know, the council doesn't realize behind the scenes all of the stuff that, that, uh, city staff does at budget time. The mayor is really deeply involved in the budget before you guys even see it. And it's because of Connie and Jerry and Michelle and the rest of the girls upstairs that you're able to not be here until midnight and you're able to finish your budget about three or four sessions and you're done. It's because of their hard work. So, you know, that, just to let you know where the, where all the responsibility lies. You guys vote on it, they, they do all the hard work. When I first got on the council, council did all the hard work. But. Anybody else? Anybody else want to thank their voters?
There's Kate, let's go. Back there, there's Kate, come on. Back there, there's Kate, come on.
I saw her. Babe, you're pleased?
Consideration motion, convening closed session for similar Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight-five-one. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Reference possible industrial park land acquisition and expansion, possible amendment to, uh, United Ethanol Department of Developers Agreement and potential sale of property located at three forty East Madison.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm.
opposed? Mayor's decision, the council, take a little break.